2.2-3711-A1 personnel. 2.2-3711-A7 consultation with legal counsel. 2.2-3711-A8 consultation with legal counsel general. Ms. Chair, I've moved to certify that the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion to go into executive session were heard, discussed, or considered in executive session.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Board, and we'll now stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will everybody just stand? Yes, everybody stand. Oh, this is great.
That's right.
That definitely was special. That was a performance of Lebanon Elementary All Virginia Choir. You did a great job, students. Okay, Dr. Hooker. Yes, at this time, would we have anyone that would like to speak before the Board?
Before I do the prayer tonight, let me kind of purpose this, that a few years ago, a certain organization said you couldn't have scheduled prayer, but they can't stop spontaneous prayer, and I'm a pretty spontaneous type of guy, so we've been spontaneous for a while now, and I normally thank God for the Board members, the ones that were here before JJ and Chrissy was on, and ask them to give leadership, and, you know, thanking for everybody that we acknowledge. I want to do something a little different tonight, and as a minister, I hope this isn't the last time I get to pray, but if it's the first, if I get kicked out, it's not the first time, and I pray it's not the last. So, if you would, let's bow our hearts for a word prayer. Heavenly Father, first of all, I beg your miss, if we didn't thank you for the opportunity and the freedom to come out and exercise our constitutional rights that we take so often for granted, but coming over here, you were kind of talking to me, and, you know, a prayer that I think needs to be prayed, as a school year winds down, and so many of our kids are going off to college, or military, or workforce, or whatever it might be, and those that will be following them, the rising seniors, those going into pre-teenage for the very first time, leaving mommy and daddy, I pray, God, that you will give them the wisdom to step out of the horrible pathetic example that my generation has left them, and the generations before me. Give them a heart to know that it's okay to disagree with someone, and you can still be friends. Let them know that they're not a great person just because they won up somebody on social media, or they come up with the best one-liner at a board meeting. Lord God, let them, you know, the song that we just heard, our national anthem, let us realize that it's a question, oh say, can you see? Is that flag still there? Let their generation be the generation that ensures our flag is still there. Let them be smart enough to go in your will, and to make us one county, one state, and one nation, under one God. And I ask this in the name of Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus the Messiah. Amen.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board?
I come to you today, I am a parent of a child here in Russell County. And I've got two issues that I want to speak to you about. For one, about the policy that you all have in place for disciplining kids that get in physical altercations. That policy needs to change. I know there has to be a policy, because we don't want kids thinking it's okay to fight. However, there needs to be something in there that allows for a child that gets attacked unprovoked, that they do not get punished whenever they have to fight back to defend themselves. I have faced this this year. My son was attacked. And I've already spoken, at my son's punishment, he got two days' suspension, and that I spoke with Ms. Hooker, and she was in agreement, and my son's punishment was taken away for that instance. But that needs to change for future students, and plus, my son will still be in this school system for the next two years, providing that I don't have any more issues. But that policy needs to be reworded somehow, I know it has to be, there has to be one in place, that you all need to fix it, to where a student doesn't have to be afraid to take up for themselves for fear of being punished, when all they're doing is taking their civil, you know, using their civil rights to defend themselves. And no, I don't condone violence in any way. And then the other issue is bullying. I know you all have a, I think it's a no bullying policy, but we all know that's crap. My son's been in this school system, he's in the 10th grade now, and there's been several instances in dealing with this school system since my son's been in school, that he was bullied, and he was bullied not just by students, he was bullied by staff. And that needs to be addressed, whether it's the staff, or whether it's another student. These kids are afraid to speak up and tell when somebody's doing something, because they're afraid of the repercussions that they'll get if they tell anybody. How you all are going to address that, I don't know, but I know something needs to be done. Last year, my son's 9th grade year, he got in a fight on the school bus, and he was the one that instigated the fight. He had been bullied by this kid for over a year, and he finally had all he could take, and he stood up and hit the bully. And Mr. Potts at the Lebanon High School took it upon themselves to punish my son, not talking to my son to find out what caused the altercation, did not talk to me or my husband, did not do any investigation as to what went on, all they done was watch the bus video and just said guilty, sent my son through the court system, had to do anger management, juvenile probation, and had to do five hours of community service, over being bullied for over a year. Tell me that's fair. Tell me this anti-bullying policy is working, because it's not. And something has to be done for these kids, not just for mine, there's other kids in this county, there's little kids that's just going to be starting, they deserve better than what they're getting now. My son deserves better.
I appreciate your coming, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I didn't get your name when you began.
My name is Angela Street.
Okay, Ms. Street. Dr. Hooker, you're taking us down, I guess? And I sympathize with you, and I understand where you're coming from, and, Dr. Hooker, we've got this summer to look at these types of situations, and hopefully...
We've been dealing, like I said, since my son was 2nd grade. 2nd grade, he was bullied, and it was at Homemaker Elementary then. My son now goes to Homemaker, because after Mr. Potts and them done what they done at Lebanon in his 9th grade year, I transferred him. We foot the bill for gas to take him to school, we foot the bill to go pick him up, because I can't allow him to be somewhere where the bully, he got an assigned seat on the bus. My son had, like I said, went through the court system, he got kicked off the bus until further notice, and this other kid got an assigned seat. That's not fair. 2nd grade, my son was bullied at the school, actually not from a student, it was from Ms. Eaton, she was the assistant principal then. My son was 2nd grade, they bullied because he had trouble getting his work done in class, and they bullied and bullied us to get him tested for ADHD, so we did. And after doing so, we were told by the guidance counselor, Ms. Vanessa, that my son didn't need help, that he was just being manipulative, and he just didn't want to do his work, even though the doctor had said he had ADHD. Then, Ms. Eaton proceeded to threaten my son, that if he didn't get his work done, that he would have to go to summer school that year. Well, she had threatened him for over two weeks with that, he would be called down to her office if he didn't do his work in 2nd grade, and he would be in the office for three and four hours a day, and if they're in that office for that length of time, they're not in the classroom, they're not learning. And she, at one point, slammed her hands down on the desk, and got down in his face, and told him, "I said, get it done." All right, and then after she kept threatening for summer school, he looked at her, 2nd grade, he gets his crow full, he'll tell you what he thinks, and he told her, he said, "You can't make me do nothing that my mommy don't agree to." And she got mad, so I got called into the principal's office when I went to pick him up that evening, and she proceeded to tell me that my son took her to a place that she didn't like to go.
Well, Ms. Street, I really do appreciate your coming, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Anytime that you have any problems, and you don't get your resolution, I feel like at your principal level, you need to really immediately bring it to the attention...
We have.
...of everyone.
We have been over here to this Board several times, as I said, sometimes things get worked out. Ms. Hooker, I completely appreciate you working this last one out like you did. And we both did, because we've not always had it work that way, when we've come to the Board, it's not always worked out, and that's, I have to be a voice for not just my son, these other students, they deserve to be able to go to school and feel safe that they're not going to be, if they do go tell somebody that something's going on, that they're not going to be picked on, bullied, or, God forbid, something else because of that. And another issue that needs to be brought up, there needs to be more cameras in these shops at the trade school. I do know the cameras that they have doesn't capture the whole, it doesn't capture the whole room, and with my son, with this last attack that he had, the cameras didn't pick it up. I do have video, because this was, it was a planned attack, all of the other kids in the class knew this was going to happen, with the exception of maybe three or four kids, and my son didn't know it was going to happen, but all of the other kids knew. One had tried to lure him into the locker room, so that it wouldn't be in front of cameras, and my son didn't go, and when my son didn't go, the one that caused the altercation came out and started just punching on my son. And then, like I said, the repercussions was the one that hit my son, he got three days' suspension. My son got two days, which Ms. Hooker did take that away, but how is that fair? That the one that does it gets three days, and my son got two days, when all he was doing was trying to take his part and take up for himself? Just something needs to change, y'all. I don't know what you can do, but I know something needs to change and stop this bullying in this county for these kids, and whether it's from staff, whether it's from children, they need to be reassured that if they talk, they're not going to get in trouble.
Thank you, Ms. Street. And again, we have Dr. Hooker, if you don't get resolution with our administrators, you have a Board of Seven, and you can come to our meeting, and we'll be glad to hear you in executive, and address whatever you need to. I thank you for coming, and you too, sir.
Dr. Hooker, does our fighting policy, does that address self-defense?
That's, well, I'll look at that, make sure, I don't write off it as...
I think it needs to.
Anyone else like to address the Board?
I'll go ahead, so I can give up my seat, looks like you've got a big crowd. I just want to, my name's David Eaton, Chairman of the Board Supervisors, I just wanted to come tonight, and I know we had a pretty late meeting last night, Dr. Hooker, and I just wanted to thank you, Brooke, and all the Board, I just want to let you know that, don't let anything deter us from our responsibilities, to make sure that we fight for our people and our staff, and our, you know, as I see all these awards here tonight, I know y'all got a pretty lengthy meeting, our greatest asset in our county is our children, and we got to have those people to teach our children, and we got to pay those people a good wage to be able to not only attract new people, but to keep the ones we already have. I know that, and I hope you all do know that I'm committed to support our teachers and to support you all, and let's don't let anything deter us from the goals that we really have, and that we got high goals to set. Honestly, I wouldn't want to live in another place, and I wouldn't want to be here, and as this lady just said, I've got two grandsons getting ready to start Homemaker Elementary School, and we're excited about that, and, you know, as three of my sons, getting ready to graduate one, and we had a wonderful backlog service there the other night, with my pastor, Yoel Miller, came and spoke, and done a wonderful job, I think it had a huge impact on those kids, and we had a wonderful day of prayer that we had out here at the Government Center, and I know Shawn was there and spoke, and I told him I was so impressed with his history and his knowledge, the words that he was able to speak on, on the things that he talked about before he prayed, and as he prayed, and, but we had a lot of good leaders there that day that prayed, and prayed for our schools, prayed for our teachers, prayed for our students, and, you know, I think that we can come together as a group, both Boards, and work together to make sure that our people are taken care of. I'm so impressed with this, I know you guys have got a lot of awards to give out tonight, but I just wanted to come and thank you, thank you, don't let that deter us from our goal...
Thank you.
...to make sure that we're going to address a lot of these issues that the school has, and the school system has, and work together. I'm here for you, I want you to know that, you know, I'm a phone call away for any Board member that has a need in your district, or a need in the area to help our children, whether it be sports-related, or whatever, if we can assist, we will. And appreciate you, Bob, for all the hard work you guys do through the Workforce Program, I appreciate that, and I'm still working on...
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Street.
And I just want to say, congratulations to all these children here tonight that's going to get these awards, I want to, I want to come to the graduations and be there for you guys, and show my support for what hard work, time, and effort you all put in, in making sure we have the best of the best in Russell County, so if there's anything I ever do, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Good evening, and I apologize for my voice ahead of time. I'm Elizabeth Sabo Vance, and I'm here respectfully to request the Board to name the Castlewood softball field after my father, John Sabo. My dad is a Russell County native, and graduated from Castlewood High School. After graduation from college, he began a 26-year teaching career in the Russell County school system. In 1984, Coach Sabo started the first girls' softball team. Three years later, he and his team won the first and only state championship. In the 16-year tenure at Castlewood High School, my dad amassed an impressive 306 wins. For all these reasons, I believe he deserves the honor of having the field named for him, and have it followed if there is a new field. Today, my dad has a record of 580 wins as head softball coach in the Virginia High School Week. Thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And I'll be glad to make the motion to name the Castlewood softball field after John Sabo.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. And third... Any further discussion? We're very proud to do that, and thank you for, thank you so much for coming, and...
Thank you, God.
Thank you for his accomplishments. All in favor? Any opposed? I don't think so.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. Anyone else like to address the Board? Okay, Dr. Hooker, do we have any adjustments for the agenda this evening?
Uh, no, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a motion that we finalize our agenda tonight?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ball, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we... Have a motion that we approve the minutes of our regular monthly previous meeting? Get the date on that. It's April the 1st, April the 1st?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ball, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have the special called meeting minutes of April the 15th, 2025. Do we have a motion that we approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ball, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, we're down to our recognitions for tonight. The exciting time, I'd like to ask Ms. McCoy to come up and please help.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Russell County School, we have a lot of recognition tonight, so without further ado, we'll start with our Lebanon Elementary All Virginia Choir, if they would come forward along with their parents, River Francis, Samantha Huff, Vada Lawhorn, and Mason Reynolds, if you'll come forward, and their choir teacher, Kelsey Sykes, their principal, Ms. Tabbett alone. We had a couple that had to leave, they sang so beautifully earlier, so, Ms. Sykes, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Um, so, the All Virginia Elementary Chorus is made up of 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students from across the state, um, there was about 215 students from across Virginia that participated two weekends ago in Manassas, we practiced for six weeks before we went, then we practiced all day on Saturday, and had a wonderful concert that evening. I taught for eight years, well, this is my ninth year now, I've taken several groups, not from Russell County, but in my previous district, All Virginia Choir, and I have to brag on the students I had this year, I think they have been the best group, and I am not over-exaggerating there, they were so well behaved, and worked so hard, and were very responsible, so I'm just very, very proud of them.
Ms. Law?
Um, well, I will just reiterate what Ms. Sykes said, and two of the kiddos had to leave for other obligations, which shows you what type of students they are, they're in all the extracurriculars, I think Mason came from a soccer practice to here, and I think one was leaving for ball, and so, they're definitely well-rounded students at Lebanon Elementary, and I think it could be maybe the first group that's gone to the elementary Virginia All Choir from Lebanon Elementary, so, we're excited to have been able to allow them to participate in that, and they deserve to be recognized tonight.
Yes.
Just announce the parents' names. I left that out, it's River Francis, Mr. and Mrs. Heath Francis, Samantha Huff, Mr. and Mrs. Nicholas Huff, Vada Lawhorn, Mr. and Mrs. Dan Lawhorn, and Mason Reynolds, Mr. and Mrs. Anthony Reynolds.
Mason Reynolds? The All Virginia Elementary Chorus, 2025 All Virginia Elementary Chorus. Samantha Huff? Congratulations. And of course, we have Vada Lawhorn and River Francis, and I'll give those to Ms. Kelsey. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming, you sang beautifully. Thank you for coming.
Okay, our next recognition is Morgan Davis, Betty and Griffin Davis' parents, if you'll come forward, this is for FBLA State Leadership Conference 2025, advisors are Kim Campton, Betty Davis, Kayla Halsey, and Brandon Munk, if you'd like to come forward, and I see that, that assistant principal, no, your boss is here, sorry. If you'd like to say a few words?
Congratulations to Morgan, she did an awesome job, she was first place in introduction to FBLA at state level, she's actually also finished 3rd place in graphic design as well, and she'll be traveling in June to Anaheim, California to compete in a national competition, so, super proud of Morgan, she always does excellent everything that she does.
This is presented to Morgan Davis in recognition of winning the 2025 FBLA State Leadership Conference and Introduction to FBLA. Congratulations.
Thank you, Morgan.
Good congratulations.
Okay, our next group is Castlewood High School, FBLA State Leadership Awards, Angel Trent, daughter Roger and Richard Sanders, Candace Saunders, the daughter of Roy and Mercedes Sanders, Marilyn McCowen, David and Summer McCowen, and Melanie and Toni Browning, and Presley Jordan, Shawn and Judy Jordan, and Shannon Gordon. Is here for Castlewood High School. Is Ms. Sherri Allen here?
She is not, so, I was going to just read what she said.
Okay, good.
She just wanted me to explain what the project was about, I think she would be, the project was about the Little Devil Legacy Law, and the goal of this project was to rebuild the Castlewood High School sign... And the goal of this project was to rebuild the Castlewood High School sign that's located in front of our building. And lots of local businesses and the community and everybody has helped and contributed so much to these young ladies who have worked so hard. And, um, also they've included the masonry team, uh, that's willing to help build and line some block and brick. And the building is supposed to start tomorrow. So we are just so excited to see this come to pass and see how beautiful it is. And we are so proud of you guys and you did a wonderful job. And thank you for representing Castlewood High School.
Angel Trent? In recognition of Virginia FBLA First Place Community Service Project. Peyton Sanders? Madeline McCowen? In recognition of Virginia FBLA First Place Community Service Project. And Presley Jordan? Virginia FBLA Fourth Place Journalism. Thank you and congratulations. 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 Good to see you.
Our next group are from Castlewood High School and it, they are our Forensics, uh, winners. The head coach is Shanda Booker, if she'll come forward if she's here, along with Jane Kennedy. And our winners are Colton Kennedy, Travis and Nada Kennedy' parents. Um, Sadie Dingus, parents Richard and Jeannie Dingus. Rhianne Ramsey, Terry and Angela Ramsey. And Joslyn Phillips, Ronnie and Jessica Phillips.
This group is phenomenal. Um, they've worked very hard all year. Um, and they've done it as multi-sport athletes. And most of their preparation came in their free time. They would have to move over to the girlhood and practice, practicing on the bus, uh, reciting their pieces on their way to school. Um, during other sporting events when they had free time. And even came up on side races and worked to, um, become what they are now. And I couldn't be prouder of Sadie, Rhianne, and Colton who are here, and Josie who was not able to make it. Um, they have really made this a wonderful year for me and, um, all credit goes to them. They're lovely kids.
I don't know that I can say much more, but they are just a wonderful representation of Castlewood High School. And they, they worked their selves to death and practiced very hard and they, they've done a wonderful job. And we are so proud of all of you.
In recognition of the 2025 VHSL Class One State Forensics Champion, Serious Dramatic Interpretation. Congratulations. Sadie Dingus? In recognition of the 2025 VHSL Class One State Forensics Runner-Up Humorous Duo. Is it Ryan?
Rhianne.
Rhianne Ramsey. In recognition for the runner-up of the humorous duo. And Joslyn Phillips, 2025 VHSL Class One Fourth Place Poetry. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for all of you.
Okay, next, our big group, Lebanon High School, uh, State Champions, uh, Speech, uh, and Forensics. I thought when I called your name, uh, and you'll come forward along with your parents. I'm sorry, I don't have parents' names. Um, but Emma Martin, Landon Owens, Marley Bush, Mercedes Raboux, Caitlin Mullins, Abby Amos, Chloe Dillon, Katie Cole, Autumn Bridgman and Lilly Garrett, Brock Keane, Haley Stiltner, Ally Beck and Ethan Powers, Macy Ferguson, Olivia Hess, Callie Salz, Keaton Staller, Elliot Breeding, and Coach Sarah Stoops, if you'll come forward. Ms. Stoops, I'm gonna start with you.
All right. Well, first of all, uh, I know that it looks like we only have a very small portion of our team today. And that is just because I have students that are so, um, involved in our school. And I think that, uh, is what helps them be so successful. So we have students that are at, um, track and soccer today. We have kids who work. So we apologize, but they send their regards and they thank you very much. But, um, we hate that they couldn't make it today. Um, I can't, I, I don't know what to say. I, wonderful, wonderful things, uh, about this group. I only have one leftover from our very first state championship, and that's Emma here. Uh, and you know, you get that first one and you think, wow, this is awesome. This will probably never happen again. I'm so proud of these kids, but they just, they come out and they want to do well. And they want the program to succeed and they work really, really, really hard. And it shows. And I, you know, I can't, I can't brag enough on how much and how hard they work. Um, they are already, the ones who are not graduating, the ones who are, I'm sad. But the ones who are not graduating are already looking for pieces for next year. They started pretty much as soon as state was over. They said, what are we gonna do next year? How are we gonna do better next year? And so, um, it's just a, um, a testament to how great that they, what the heart that they put into the program and how much that they want to represent. And I'm really, really proud of them because they are fantastic human beings just in general. So they're really great.
I love coming here for speech. Uh, last month, we recognized Castlewood's academic team. You can look out on the wall and see all the homemaker academic teams. You know, we're in Appalachia and there's sort of a, uh, sort of a stigma about Appalachia that we may be not a little bit backwards or a little bit not cultured. And, you know, this just goes to show us the talent of our children here in this county. Uh, that we can do so many academic and theatrical things. You know, they say the state stops at Roanoke, but I can tell you that speech and forensics come through Lebanon High School. And it's because Sarah is so good at her job. She brings these kids out. Um, they come out from tennis. They come out from soccer, basketball, baseball, football, uh, academic team. They do both. We have kids that just are multi-talented and it's awesome that they can represent our school in this way. And we're so proud of them and we're so proud of Ms. Stoops. We're very lucky to have her.
We have individual plaques, but we also have a team plaque. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Landon Owens?
You may have the story down.
Emma Martin? Teenage Mathematically VHSL Class Two State Forensics Champion Pros. Congratulations. Mercedes Raboux? Okay. Abby Amos? In recognition of the 2025 VHSL Class Two State Forensics, Third Place Original Oratory. Marley Bush? In recognition for the runner-up of pros. Caitlin Mullins? Katie Cole? In recognition of Third Place Storytelling. Chloe Dillon?
Springing biddy-biddy.
All of these two.
Okay. Lilly Garrett? In recognition of Fourth Place Serious Duo. Your state flag? Brock Keane?
Baseball.
I know, I may have to give this to you. Autumn Bridgman? Ally Beck? Macy Ferguson? Haley Stiltner? In recognition of State Forensics Fifth Place Impromptu Speaking. Congratulations. Ethan Powers? In recognition of State Forensics Humorous Duo. Callie Salz? We have Olivia Hess.
And the rest of them are on.
Keaton Staller and Elliot Breeding.
Zacha thinks she needs some help up here.
This is to Ms...
I drop these, I'm in trouble. Pressure's on.
This is presented to Ms. Sarah Stoops for the 2025 VHSL Class Two State Forensics Championship. And this is also a plaque for the school that I'll give to Mr. Potts. And I see it for Lebanon High School Forensics Champions. That was great. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Oh, I know how you do what you do. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next group are our Skills USA State Winners. Um, if, uh, Mr. Larry Razzit will come forward and the students and their parents when I call them out. I know Booker Steffy couldn't be here tonight, but his parents are Keith and Sarah Steffy, Levi Lester, Mr. Greg Lester, Hunter Cox, Garland Cox, and Pollock Cox, Scotty Smith, James Smith, and Melissa Rose, Samantha Ray, William and Cheryl Ray, Shay Johnson, Billy and Vicky Johnson, Haley White, Alex Allier, and Stephanie White, Maddie Bailey, Donald and Tracy Bailey, and Rihanna Stanley, Jerry Chee, and Tammy Doobie. Ms. Connie Stinson? Response please, if you will say your words.
Every year I say that it can't get any better than the year before. Uh, these kids, uh, they have, sorry, they, she was last year. So Lou Brando had a trophy this year. This is a great group of kids and we never thank the parents enough. And tonight I want to concentrate to give a round of applause to the parents. Each kid works hard. Uh, they behave very, very well. They've got some going to nationals and we're very proud of that. And we just want to thank everybody for your hard work. These kids have worked really hard. Has nothing to do with me or Mr. Brooks or anybody else, but they've worked hard. We want to thank the board for supporting us, uh, Dr. Hooker, uh, our CTE Director, Mr. Mullins, and our principal, Mr. Razzit. Thank you all.
Uh, just to tell you a little bit about, uh, uh, masonry competition. They had to construct a block and brick corner. Had to do, uh, orientation brick in different patterns. Took four of them up there, all four of them placed. We had two firsts, a second, and a third. So they worked really hard in the shop and they, and I'm glad they got to showcase their skills. And boy, today, they proved it when they, when they got in the competition, they done real well. But the coolest thing I think about the whole deal is all these boys that play, and three or four in my shop, they're out there in your community right now doing the projects already. And, uh, getting job offers. Uh, Booker's got a job offer for the summer. Uh, Scotty worked with Travis Gilbert over the summer. Hunter Cox worked with Johnny Hagerman. They're doing a job just today, finishing up at the Farm Bureau. Uh, we're gonna do one at the park and we're gonna work on the Castlewood sign like we're talking about. So, I mean, these guys are, are putting their skills to work right here in the community. So I think that's awesome.
Thank the board for, uh, recognizing our students. And, you know, as we see these students walk through here, uh, how talented we have here in Russell County. And not only academically, but these students here, uh, performing their skills at the state level. We're all, we're here almost, I think I've been, uh, principal now seven years. We've been here every time, uh, with students that have performed well at the state level. I can't be more proud of these students. Uh, they just, they work hard every day. And I'm gonna thank my staff, uh, all my instructors, and especially these students for the hard work that they put in at locations for this day. Thank you all.
Scotty Smith? In recognition of winning Skills USA Third Place Bricklaying. Hunter Cox? Levi Lester? In recognition of winning Skills USA Second Place Masonry. Haley White? In recognition of winning Skills USA Second Place Job MO Open Criminal Justice. Maddie Bailey? Skills USA Second Place Job MO Open Criminal Justice. Samantha Ray? In recognition of winning Skills USA First Place Job MOA Criminal Justice. Shay Johnson? In recognition of winning Skills USA First Place Job MOA Criminal Justice. And last but not least, Brienne Stanley. In recognition of winning Skills USA Third Place Job Interview. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you for coming. Proud of you, I'm sure.
Proud of you and I'm sure. Congratulations. Good to see you. I know you're proud of us. Good to see you.
Yes. My ladies. We're proud of you.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. And they're proud of you. Very much. Congratulations. So proud of you. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Just leave it. Good job. I know you're proud of you. Congratulations.
Our next recognition is Teacher of the Month. And that goes to Miss Sarah Stoops. So she'll come forward and walk with this plaque. I'd like to read your nomination. Mrs. Stoops is my daughter's speech and drama coach and a friend and colleague of mine at Lebanon High School. This weekend, speech coach, formerly forensics, Sarah Stoops and her team were awarded an unprecedented fourth state championship in a row. My daughter has been a part of this team since her freshman year when the team won a first state championship. Sarah is an excellent coach and teacher and has helped my daughter grow in her confidence, voice, performance, leadership and team building. There is no other team like the speech team or One Act that is as supportive and inviting and welcoming of others. This is all in addition to a full-time English teacher with an excellent SOL scores and EOC reading and writing and someone who has brought back a spring musical to Lebanon High School, much of which is time spent without pay. She does it because she loves it and her work and dedication and the kids' love and respect for her certainly is deserving of recognition.
Absolutely.
I just told Zach I need speech lessons because I always get it here and my voice cracks and things like that. So it's, it's awesome that she works with our kids because, you know, it helps give them confidence. And as we talked about before, you know, we have a lot of athletes that did, but we also have kids that maybe are trying to find themselves, find their voice, try to figure out who they are. And Miss Stoops helps them to find who they are. And that's, you know, in this recommendation here, that's reflected. But we have a lot of students who Miss Stoops has, you know, fostered through the last four years and she's done a great job with them. My own child loves her. We're, she is such an asset to Lebanon High School. In, in addition to the rings that we like to see, the play that we talked about, One Act, we've had considerable success and One Act under her as well. And she's an awesome English teacher as well. We're really blessed to have her. You can't leave her alone, okay?
Sarah Stoops, Lebanon High School has been named Teacher of the Month. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Zach's going to have to build you in a while.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Potts.
Okay, our Employee of the Month goes to a great team at Castlewood High School and Elementary School, which is our cafeteria staff. So I know I don't think many are here tonight, but if you'll come forward, I'll send Ms. Brenda Bieber and Ms. Alice Collins, Ms. Jane Kennedy and Mr. Pageant if you'll come forward. We do have a big staff at Castlewood Elementary and High School because they feed a lot of kids. And I didn't leave their nomination upstairs, but I know what it says. And it's all very true. This team was nominated and chosen because they work so great as a team and family and they feed the kids every day a wonderful meal. And they work so hard to make everything wonderful for the kids. And the kids appreciate everything they do and they always have a smile on their face. And I have to say that they are one of the best cafeteria staffs that we have in the county. So I, I wish that everybody could be here tonight, but I do appreciate Alice and Brenda being here. So I do appreciate them and, and, and that is a true nomination and a true recognition. So I'll let Mr. Pageant speak now.
No, I'm very happy with they, Ms. Alice, you're crapping up. She wasn't allowed to come, but, but no, I've known Ms. Alice a long time and I'm very, very excited that they are recognized. They don't get enough recognition. And for you guys that have them in the Castlewood, our cafeteria staff is feeding two schools out of one cafeteria. And so it's no easy undertaking and they do with a smile on their face and we've got everything from our pre-K three to our seniors that they're feeding. So in, in one lunch service, they can go from putting things on a tray for a three-year-old to, you know, trying to get the seniors to get out of the lunch line because they're standing there talking. So it is not an easy thing. And we are extremely blessed to have them and they are some of the most important people that we have at our school. And if you ask my kids, they are the most important people because that's the most important part of the day.
Exactly.
Excited that they got this on.
I would like to say the same thing. It's the hardest, you know, working ladies in there building and I love them each and everyone. I have a personal relationship with them. It makes my day to walk downstairs and see them. And another little story about Ms. Alice I have to tell. Last week, I was a little bit sick and it was her birthday, so I went down just to sing Happy Birthday. And so I cleared my throat, you know, started singing. Well, about halfway through, I said, Alice, I'm sorry I've been sick. She said, I don't remember you called Ricky Couldn't Sing Me Neither. But that's the kind of relationship we have and I love that. It just makes my day to walk through there and see them and talk to them and, and we lift each other up and I love having, I love them.
Thank you.
Alexis Hale, I'll just introduce each one of us. Alexis Hale. Alicia Adams. Angel Mullins. Kayla Towns. Regina Sexton. Brooke Marshall. Kami Hicks. Ms. Alice Collins. Ms. Brenda Bieber. Rebecca Woods. And Pam Fields. Thank you all.
I was speaking to Ms. Alice today and I told her the same thing. Hardest working lady to hear.
Congratulations. Thanks for what you do every day. Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
How gracious.
And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
I'd also like to say thank you to Georgia. She's the director over these cafeterias and if anybody's ever walked through our cafeterias, you will notice that we have number one state-of-the-art cafeterias from lunch lines to just the cafeteria itself. But they do a great work in the cafeteria, but she also does a lot of work here in this office. So thank you, Georgia.
That was a good evening. We're down to our bills and accounts. We have a motion that we pay the bills tonight.
I'll make a motion, we pay our bills.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We are to the resignations and retirements.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a short list of resignations and retirements.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve our retirements and resignations tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And just a real quick thing on there, Mr. Donovan Hilton resigning from his coaching position and, and I just want to let him know that he's in our prayers.
Absolutely.
And everybody, please keep him in your prayers.
Okay. We're to the new personnel and transfers.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, we do have a list of new hires and transfers.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve those tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Okay, Dr. Hooker, taxes to air.
Action items. Okay, our first action item is a second reading and approval of policies.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item number two.
Okay. Action item number two, I'm real excited to announce, is the request of the approval of a thousand dollar bonus for full-time employees and $500 for part-time employees, paid on May the 23rd, 2025, with the exception of the cafeteria staff due to the previously budgeted bonus out of the food service funds.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You better not. That's all I say. Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Okay. Item number three, request approval that employee be placed on paid administrative leave until further review or repeal.
I'll make a motion that we table that.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Yes, just a couple of updates. May is a big month for us and again, just reminding you of our graduations. The graduation dates for the high school is on May the 18th. Castlewood High School at 1:00 PM. Lebanon High School at 4:00 PM. At Honecker High School at 7:00 PM. Our Career and Technology Center graduation will be on Thursday, May the 22nd. And this year it will be at LHS Gym beginning at 6:00 PM. The RCCTC nursing graduation will be Friday, May the 23rd, and it will still be at the Career and Technology Center at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. We're down to the sales tax. April, 305,007.59. The ADM, 3,061, as of 3/31/2025. Does any board member have any question or comment on the maintenance report? The expenditure report? Okay, Dr. Hooker, our next meeting?
Yes, will be Tuesday, June the 3rd.
Okay, we've got calendar events there and all that's listed?
Yes, I went over the graduations and then, of course, the last day of school will be May the 30th, dismissal at 11:00 AM.
May 30th, 11:00 AM. Does any board member have anything they need to bring up this evening?
Yes, I'd like to thank Belfast Elementary for our meal tonight. It was delicious.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Gibson, Mr. Parsons, anybody?
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Uh, well, I would like to thank Ms. Music for being here with us tonight. And again, thank all our employees and folks that showed up last night in support of our schools and our students and their children. And if this lined-up table, if their accomplishments doesn't mean anything, I don't know what does. Actually, the Russell County Schools is probably one of our best selling thing when our supervisors go out trying to recruit business and industry to our county. Our, our students, our faculty, that is a selling tool because we're here to collaborate with businesses that come in, to help them train their workers, to perform their, to make their business successful. So I think, I think we have a excellent economic tool for them to advertise when they go out trying to recruit businesses to our county. Uh, that's enough said about that, I guess. So we have a motion?
All this recognition we have tonight and with, looking back, all our sports, academic, career and technology, we're, we're tops.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to everyone.
I'm proud of all of our personnel. They work very hard and they're so, so deserving. And we want to move our county forward and we want to move our schools forward. We sure do. Thank, thanks again for everybody coming and for your time and your dedication. And look forward to our graduations and a successful summer and then we'll be getting ready for another year. Yeah. So we have a motion, a week?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?